This is over there.
I didn't see that.
Because our cable still doesn't get.
I thought there was supposed to be another button there somewhere.
I've always felt that that was illegal, that there was a requirement for.
Maybe there's something. Now we have a night. Now we have a light.
We should probably just start.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay, success.
Very exciting.
Kathy did it.
Okay, I apologize again for the delay. It's nice to have the microphones up and working though, so everybody in the audience can hear and the people at home can hear. So welcome to the February 4th Town Council meeting. If Councilor Hurley would please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge and to the image to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the town clerk please take attendance?
Councilor Breton?
Here.
Councilor Forrest?
Here.
Councilor Hurley?
Here.
Councilor Latina is unable to attend. Councilor Lesser?
Here.
Councilor Rell?
Here.
Councilor Spinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martino?
Here.
Mayor Morin Vello?
Here. Thank you, Dolores. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public may speak for five minutes. Please, for up to five minutes, please come up and give your name and address. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight? Come on up.
With the baby.
You don't get 10 minutes because you have the baby.
Hi, Casey White, 91 Center Street. I'll try to balance here. I was blocked from the Police Department Facebook page this weekend and really I'm not here to talk about that, although I think that's concerning. I'm more concerned about the lack of a standard of communications across our town departments. I hear that there's a social media policy in the works that's been put on pause for various reasons and that it will be resumed once the new town manager is in place. And I urge that to happen very quickly because our town departments represent our town. They represent us. And I think that should be carefully considered in how that is monitored and maintained. Also, I think we should consider having a police commission, as we have many other commissions in town, where citizens in a bipartisan fashion represent the community and interface with different areas of town operations. We don't have that currently with the police, and I think that would be great for community relations, for trust building, for transparency, and for the image of our town. So that's all I have to say right now, and thank you for considering all of that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up, Gus.
Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. What am I going to talk about tonight? The mill rate. I was reading the reminder last week, and I found out that basically Wethersfield has the honor to be, you know, on the top with few other towns in Connecticut. Almost 41. It's a lot. Do you ever ask yourself why is it going up? I mean, does it bother you at all that it's one of the highest ones? I guess not. You know, I compare this town with old Lyme, and somehow old Lyme is 21 point something, 22 mill rate. Right here is 41. It's unbelievable. I have to ask why. I'm sure that there are reasons, but some of the reason probably is that the value of the houses in Wethersfield are going down. And since I guess you can only assess the mill rate based on 70% of the value, the less the value of the house in Wethersfield, the higher the mill rate. So we get in, you know, hit pothways. The houses, they even go anyplace. If anything at all, they lose value, and the mill rate goes up. How much longer can basically the retirees be around here? You know, in a few years on the road, might as well give you my social security to pay for the taxes. Is that what you want? I know, Tony, you look at me, but sometimes, you know, the way you look at me says, what the heck is this guy talking about? That's okay. We all have our opinions, and we all have our basically right to speak. Five minutes, right? I still have three minutes. What do we get out of here, especially the older families? My kids have been out of school for a while, and right now I don't get anything at all. I cut some evergreens a little bit. I went to the town yard. They won't let me in. Says, you gotta pay at least $20. Says, what? Nickel and diamond people in Wethersfield. I just have a small pickup truck, you know, I had some branch. He says, okay, my wife and I, let's go there. Oh, go and see the director. Says, where does my money go? Almost $8,000 a year in the house. We are three of us. What did we do? What did we take away, or what do we receive from the town? Maybe the police protection sometimes, but the speed on my street keeps on going up. So I don't know if they're doing a good job on that. You know, the problem that the mill rate keeps on going up right here is because of, I think, the money that you spend. A statistic that I heard on the radio, Fox News by the way, says that when you take two comparable jobs, one in public and one in private, the one in public is 117%, or, let me put it this way, $100 an hour in private costs $117 in public. And on top of that, if you do not behave when you work outside and you do not do your job, you get fired. In public works, you do not. There is no accountability on top of that. When I graduated from school years ago, and I had a choice to go, you know, private or public, you know, the public never paid us as much, but the benefits were good and the accountability wasn't there. The private paid a little bit more, but you know, if you did not do your work, you will get fired. But I went, you know, and I chose, and I'm not, I'm not, how do you say, regretting anything at all. I'm glad that I went where I went. Okay, it's enough about the mill rate. I've been coming right here now for the past 10 years, and I always complain about this, and I always complain about that. And sometimes I never get a feedback, and I'm not trying to talk to you right here. But if I say something right here, right now, and it requires some attention, why don't you say something the next meeting, or the following meeting, whatever? I mean, how long do I have to wait before I get an answer? Something else came to mind. Signs. Again, Ridge Road and Prospect. There are some evergreens there. There is a sign as you approach Prospect. There's just like, you know, left and right, and you cannot see that sign. I complained about two or three years ago. Nothing is done yet. I also asked a question regarding the speed limit. How does it set it? You know, can I get an idea? You know, what are the guidelines? Collier Road, a 30-foot roadway, no sidewalk, and the speed limit is 35. Is that right? Or like, you know, some streets have no true trucks. Wow, maybe my street should have a sign that says no true trucks. My time is up. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gus. Anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up, Mr. Mazzarella.
Good evening. Tom Mazzarella, 600 Walkin Hill Road. MDC. So you have on the discussion list today a resolution supporting MDC's proposed rate structure for some of the work they're doing. Rather than providing MDC with a resolution, I would suggest you send them a letter of no confidence in their ability to manage the MDC. You go on the MDC website, and it claims that we're one of their partners. We're one of the eight-member towns. We're their partners. I don't see that we're a partner of theirs at all. They pretty much tell you what they're going to do, and it gets done. I don't know why they want us to provide a resolution. I guess six of the other towns have already gone along with it. I don't see any reason to even send it in. What are they going to do? Shut our water off? Stop accepting our sewage? I think one of the basic, and, okay, what they're proposing to do probably makes sense. It's going to smooth out some of the costs. And that presentation they gave was pretty hard to follow. There was a lot of information that was being fired at us. I only got a part of it. I don't know if you guys picked up more of it. But when you go to that bar graph that's in tonight's agenda, the one thing that I do come away with is, yeah, it's going to smooth out the pricing a little bit, combining it. But it's also going to shift the burden onto the taxpayer in their water, in the form of their water bill, rather than the ad valorem. I think the main problem with the whole system is this ad valorem methodology of charging for sewage disposal just doesn't make any sense. And I think the MDC needs to move away from that system and go to more of a user-based type's charge, where some towns would charge a sewer fee based on your water consumption, reasoning that whatever water you take out of the tap is going to go down into the sewer. And they have some exceptions for irrigation and watering and filling swimming pools and things like that. But it brings the cost more in line with the consumption of water. You can have a property that has a fairly high value, and there may be only one or two residents in that house. You can have a property that is of a lot lower value, and you might have six or seven people living in that house. You're going to produce a lot more sewage waste in the second case than the first. If you look at that chart, it talks about, you know, comparing average costs of sewage disposal in the member towns. It ranges from $141 to $383, with Wethersfield being second towards the top at $349. Now, if you were to just average all those, it comes out to $278, which would be more realistic. If you're just averaging the cost of what they charge for disposing of waste amongst all the member towns. Now, if you shift it to user-based, consumption-based, it's going to shift even more drastically. And I just think that's a fair way to go about it. If you're using more water and you're putting more water down the drain, then you should pay more than a person that's not. So I'm not quite sure how it works here. I understand we have three representatives. And I thought, based on some discussion at the last meeting or a prior meeting, that we were going to have those individuals come down here and explain why they voted for that budget, what was the reasoning. I know one of the representatives voted no. He happened to be one of three out of the 20-something people that voted at MDC on those budgets. So I don't think we're being fairly represented as the partner at MDC. And I hope we could do something to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up.
Hi, Deborah Cohen, 73 Church Street. In the interest of time, I will just say that because I believe that there is strength in numbers, I would like to add to my support, my support rather, to what Casey White brought up to your attention earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Catherine Laforza, 190 Brimfield. I am also here with regard to the Wethersfield Police Department Facebook page. I've started following it a few months ago, and I have been extremely dissatisfied and uncomfortable with the way that the page is managed and the type of content that is going on that page, and how it represents us as a town. I have, and over the last few days, things sort of really spiraled out of control, and I'm really here to express my concern about the police department using that mechanism of social media to make this town look like, or appear as, we are partisan, we are divided, and that people can't feel safe going to the police department website to get information. They're going to get propaganda. So I really recommend that we institute a town-wide would be great, but at least for the police department, a social media policy that is enacted and policed, and stop the kind of trolling that's going on there, and let citizens feel that that service of Facebook page is there for us as citizens, not for trolls to come and disparage people, or to have the content being put out by the police department be partisan. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Come on up, Cindy.
Good evening. Cindy Zerblis, 119 Two Red Highway. So I'm going to read you guys a post on Facebook right now. It says, "Three Sisters, We Need You. Tonight is Town Council Meeting at 7:00. A few of us will be showing up to voice our concerns with police's social media page. So many of us have been outraged by the racist comments and posts. This is our chance to shine the light on. Their page needs a social media policy that follows town employee conduct. We are hoping that by starting conversation, it will lead to change. Please consider showing up for this. We are stronger in numbers." And it goes on, but, you know, nothing big. But what I will say, where I will agree with the woman that wrote this is, yeah, they're right. Some of those pages can get a little nasty, and maybe not nice, and race. I have seen racist things come out there. But I will say, and I'm not going to say that any of these women that really spoke up here tonight, but there are a couple of, I'm going to call them renegade members, who have personally attacked people on that page, swearing at them, calling them names from that group. So they are just as guilty at it. I'm going to say that. Not all the members. It's, to me, as a woman, I think it's great that that group got together, but I think there's a couple members in that group that need to be told to pipe down a little bit. Now, as far as the police department and the social media page, it appears to me that, I believe we came back and spoke with you back in November about the crime, and everybody's sitting in these seats here pretty much shook their head and said, "Yeah, we don't want this happening in our town. Yeah, we're going to do something about it. We're going to fight for our residents and make sure that these crimes don't happen." So what the police chief was doing was letting the town people know that there's a bill up at the legislator saying to raise the age. And somehow that's turned into a racist thing? How is that racist? Somebody explain to me how that is racist. Now, I'm going to tell you, as somebody who is a victim of a home invasion by a bunch of white boys that were juveniles, I want the age raised. That's what I want to see done. I want it to be lowered, rather, I'm sorry. I take that back. But I'm just, you know, I don't understand how this is turning into a racial thing. This is not a white, a black thing. This is about doing what's right. There are juveniles coming into our town, breaking laws. We need to fix that. All the chief was trying to do is let the residents know, there's a bill out there. Contact your legislators. Let them know that you want them to support this. Is that a bad thing? Is educating people on a social media site? It just appears that when certain people in this town don't agree with things, they get sworn at on social media, they get yelled at on social media. So personally, I don't think there needs to be a social media committee or anything like that. And as far as a police commission, I personally have gone to the chief already and told him I'd like to start a neighborhood watch, and he's told me to do my research and I have started. Guys, done. This has to stop. You know what? I've been a Democrat since, longer than some of these people on this page have been born. This town is out of control right now. It's got to stop because it ain't going to bring us together if we keep acting like this.
Anybody else like to speak tonight? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Bob Young, come on up.
Mr. Young, I think she called you.
Come on up. Yep, Mr. Young.
Good evening, Robert Young, 20 Coppermill Road. I came in here late. There was something wrong with your audio, whatever this is. I think you still got a problem with it because I'm sitting back there and I can hardly understand what some people were saying. But that doesn't matter. I normally come here prepared to talk about other issues. And, you know, one of the issues was, and I know somebody did speak about the grand list, and I find that to be such an easy way of increasing taxes. It's just a person who decides whose houses are going to go up in value. And of course, the mill rate is always there. And it's going to clobber people. Now, it wasn't no more than maybe a meeting ago, two meetings ago, when Mr. Forrest had made a comment about, well, the mill rate, if it goes up, the, you know, the grand list goes up, the mill rate will go down. Yeah. It'll go down for a very short year or two. And then it's going to come back with the way you folks spend money and the way you keep borrowing money and you keep hammering us for more money. It's going to be right back up over the $40 and it's going to be continuing. And we're going to be up in the mid-40s within a matter of a year or two. So, whether you have adjustments to your mill rate or not, it's still going up and it's still costing all of us. And it wasn't no more than last week I was down here to pay my tax bill and it is just another bunch of money to just throw in the hole. And it disappears so fast, like piranhas are in there, eating it up. And the way you do spend money, and I object to a lot of the ways you spend money, it makes it even worse. So anyway, there was some discussion also about the MDC and this agreement. I know they had a budget a couple, a month ago or so that they voted on, three weeks ago, whatever. And that was pretty disgraceful for all of them but one of those commissioners to vote for a much higher budget and just keep things moving upwards. And I do recall you, Mayor, you were going to write a letter to the MDC and hammer them or at least explain to them why you can't increase it. But they still did it. And I did say, nobody would listen to you anyway because you don't represent anybody who represents pushing taxes down. You want taxes to go up. I've been looking, continuing to look at properties in the area. And of course, I sent you, you know, at the last town council meeting, I had some different transactions regarding the Roses Berry Farm over in Glastonbury, Connecticut, that was sold, that I offered the town clerk to put into the record. Of course, she refused to accept my articles. I didn't write them. They came out of the Hartford Current. But then I did send all of you folks and probably, you know, several thousand more out to people within Weathersfield so they could all get a feel as to what's really happening. And last night, I sent out some more. And I sent it all to all of you folks and some other folks as well regarding properties. And surprisingly, there was another property that popped up right here in Rocky Hill. And you all have read that, I'm sure. I'm sure you've all looked at it. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven and a half acres of property with a very nice home on it. Have you looked at those pictures that they have on there? Beet stack, that junky house up there on Highland and Collier. About 2,300 square foot house, sitting on 27 acres. It's all for sale for $900,000. And here, our town council, they negotiated a contract with the sellers of the Keisha Farm for $75,000 an acre or $2.4 million. And it's only four miles away. And I don't understand that, Mayor. I don't understand how an appraiser, a professional appraiser, could put together an appraisal knowing that properties are not selling. If anything, my analysis, looking at more than 40 different properties that are on the market, I've seen some where they're dropping their prices. Yet we are paying a price that's equivalent to the Gold Coast.
If you would please finish up, Mr. Young.
Sure enough. And I know I reminded you folks about the Gold Coast. And it's town of Stamford, Connecticut, right on the coast. Fifteen acres of land for $1.2 million. Double that. That's 30 acres times $2.4 million. And here in Old Weathersfield, we're going to pay $2.4 million for a measly 32 acres of land. That's around $75,000 an acre, exactly to what some of those properties on the Gold Coast are selling for. Thank you, madam. I'll be back.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Anybody else who'd like to speak? Come on up.
Megan Hartline, 19. Talking to the microphone. Sorry. Very short. Megan Hartline, 19 Rosedale Street. Unfortunately, you've figured out our dastardly plan to use the baby to get more time, but so I just let him stay sleeping, Casey. But I just wanted to say that I work in Hartford at Trinity College with people from, who live all over this area, people from Hartford, people from West Hartford, people from East Hartford, other people from Weathersfield. And I don't always get good comments about our town from, they hear that there are negative things being talked about on social media, they hear about, they hear about our town pages making partisan comments and they, these are things that other people seem to know about. And it's reflecting poorly on our town. When, you know, I understand the previous commenter saying that it was a town page wanting, that there have been incidents of town pages wanting to bring legislation up to the community so that they know about it. My instinct would be that that's not the town's place, that if they're going through and they're saying, here are all of the bills that are up in the legislature, or even here are all of the bills relating to criminal justice that are up in the legislature, that would be one thing. But pointing out and saying, this is a bill that we're excited about, that we support, or this is a bill from a legislator who's listening to us, that's different to me. And so that's why I would also be in favor of a town social media policy, which I know that the mayor has said that the town is working on, especially once we have our new town manager in place. But I just wanted to come up and voice my support for that as well. I think that it would help reflect very well on our town to put something like that in place and to have a more specific town-wide messages that are going out that are, I'm trying to get away from the word controlled, but I keep wanting, but having a controlled message of what we stand for as a town and what we value. And so that would be what I would, what's something that I would be very supportive of and that I would be excited and that I think would reflect well on us as a town, both within our town here and also in the surrounding area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak here tonight? Come on up.
Katie Sullivan, 79 Wright Road. I'm not going to go long. It's the same topic that we've been discussing, the police Facebook page. I'm getting to the point where it pops up on my feed and I cringe before I even read it. I understand that wanting to let someone know about the bill, that's one thing, but this topic of lowering the age has been hammered and hammered and hammered on this page. It was not just that one instance. And, you know, then the comments that come back are very nasty, a lot of them. I really respect our police department, so this is not an anti-police department thing. Anytime I've dealt with officers, they've been very professional and I've been happy and I feel very, very safe living in this town. And I live a few blocks away from Hartford and I don't fear that at all. But I just, I just think that having this, you know, opinion, it's opinion, it's not fact, you know? Tell us, be careful, cars are being broken into, make sure you lock your cars. Great. We should, you know, we should make the age lower, you know, this is what's happening when we arrest people. That's opinion. That doesn't belong there. So, that's what I have to say. I agree. I know that policy is being worked on, but I would just like to see something that is less opinion and more just factual information to help our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up, Mike.
Hi, my name is Mike Lipgood, 51 Orchard Hill Drive. I spoke here in early December after the police chief went through his reasonings and his suggestions for helping to solve some of the recent crime. At the time, I commented I have a child that was the same age of the boy that was mugged after a car was stolen in West Hartford and came here. And the chief said that they thought the same person also held somebody up at gunpoint three days later. And basically, his number one recommendation was to get this law changed, based on his opinion and the opinions of others in similar positions in other towns. It's a, I know there's a lot of emotion here. I'm looking at it from a public safety perspective and I think as a community, we can work together. I don't think there's a left side or a right side or a right or wrong. We have to solve the issues of the crime. And my child is, my wife is still taking my child to the bus stop two months after it happened. And that's going to continue until we hear what the game plan is. And unfortunately, I haven't heard anything. Russ Moran, our representative, said he would facilitate a conversation. Others said they would. And I don't know if it's just me, but I have not heard anything about where we are in taking this to the next step and getting a plan in place, except for what I see on the Facebook pages. And I would hope as a community, we can all come together and solve this and take everybody's intent as positive and work together to figure it out. But we do need some communication on a periodic basis on what the game plan is, where we are. And the most important thing in my view is protecting our children. And I don't think we'll get a lot of disagreement on that. We may have different ways of doing it, but if we come together, we can solve it. So my suggestion is over-communicate, even if there's nothing new. I haven't heard anything since December 3rd that said, here's what we're doing. I'm not even sure where we are with the people that we thought did this. I just think we need to have a minimum more communication to solve, at least get people a little more comfortable. And I would just encourage people to make sure they know there's difference of opinion, pursue positive intent, and let's work together to get this to a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay, anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, so public comments closed. We will move on. We have a hearing tonight on a resolution in support of the MDC's integrated plan. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak specifically to the resolution? Come on up, sir.
Thank you. My name is Bob Woodward. I live at 456 Middletown Avenue in Weathersfield. We've lived there for 40 years and I would like to speak very firmly against this resolution. I'm very disappointed by the leadership in this town for even bringing it to us, but I've been disappointed recently by other aspects of the town leadership with our neighborhoods, so it's nothing new. You certainly gave MDC quite a valentine in this. I live in the neighborhood that is experiencing MDC's clean water project with a sewer line that's not ours that's coming through our neighborhood. Right now, they're more focused on the west side of Silas Dean than us, but they'll be back to finish. It brought chaos to our neighborhood. And if we hadn't stood together, we wouldn't have gotten our mail some days, we wouldn't have gotten our trash pickup some days, we had all kinds of extra cars in the neighborhood. It was not, for the most part, a good experience. They did plow some snow along the barriers in front of my house, including when the town public works seemed to only be able to plow the middle of the street. And I was very grateful for that. Also, you seem in this resolution, as somebody prior to me has said, to give MDC quite an uplift in charging whatever they want for water rates which come out of our pockets and charging whatever they want for the ad valorem, which is the sewer rates, which ultimately come out of our pocket on our taxes. Every month, our water bills go up. They keep going up. We're going to have to make a choice. Do we pay the taxes that go up or do we pay the water bills? I would like to see you put, table this. I would like to see you go back to MDC and say, we need some guarantees of a reasonable water rate and a reasonable sewer rate. And I would like to see you go out and explore what it would mean for us to leave the MDC. You live down where we have lived and you will have no trouble saying that. Believe me. Go out and explore what's there for other water companies. Go out and explore what it would mean for this town and Rocky Hill to go out into the meadows and put some wells in there and start pumping our own water. I live beside a piece of wetlands, believe me. There is water just below the surface, which with a little bit of rain comes up to be almost a lake. There's plenty of water out there. If you are not content to hold this back and you are going to pass it, then I request one amendment on the, on the last paragraph, the "therefore, be it resolved" that the town of Weathersfield, please add the phrase "minus one." To borrow from a children's poem, "I may be one little soul in a great big world and I may be one little voice in a great big world, but I can be one who counts. Count me for a no." And please do not take a laugh at this. Please put that in there if you pass this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this resolution? Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I also say vote no on this resolution. I believe that they have taken such advantage of us. But of course, you folks are partners with them and taking advantage of us. And I think everybody should really realize that. You send up three people or so to be commissioners. And how, and how do they vote? They've been voting left and right for higher spending. I guess one person didn't. But up until now, it's always been more spending, more spending, and more spending. And there's no end to it. They started off with a water project of, of a million something and, and it just keeps every, it grows. It grows and I don't know why it grows. We have professionals who were, at the very beginning, say, this is what it's going to cost. And then it doesn't end up costing that. It ends up where it requires more money. And it brings up the thought about the professionals that have set these prices, these costs. Where do they stand legally? They should be brought in. It's like our school. Eighty million dollars or whatever to, to renovate our high school and then it costs another 10 million dollars or more, or whatever it is. Did you take care of that architect and, and those people that gave you the estimates? Heck, no, you, you protected them. So, you know, you're the people, you're also to blame for this. But I think at the moment, if you, so you have to write a resolution, I think the resolution should be no. And you should call back those three clowns that you have up there at the MDC. Bring them in here and replace them. When they leave the door, they don't go back. Put some new people up there, people who will do something in a rightful manner and reduce costs up there. Thank you. Vote no.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the resolution? Anybody else who'd like to speak on the resolution? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll declare the hearing closed. Next, we have a presentation from the Central Connecticut Health District. We have Charles Brown, our director, and some board members with him. If you'd come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Just give us a second to get our presentation together.
Should we talk into the microphone?
All right, definitely will talk into the microphone.
That's long enough to get them working.
So, my name is Charles Brown. I'm the health director for the Central Connecticut Health District. We serve the four towns of Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, Newington, and Berlin. I've been with the district for a little over four years now and we're going to be doing a tag-team approach to our presentation tonight between myself and our new chairman, Dr. Patricia Checo. So, I'm going to let her start the presentation off once we get it up and running here. We're just waiting for the technical things to work. We're lucky tonight.
It's up on this side, so that's good.
Come on, Katie, make it work.
Okay, it's up on that side?
Yep, we're up, we're up here.
It's up on your side?
Yes.
Super.
Okay, Charlie's already basically covered the first three slides, so hopefully we'll run through because we may take more than five minutes. And thank you for having us here, Mayor Bello and members of the board and our friend Kathy. It's a pleasure to come and hopefully be able to share with you some new and different things you may not have known and quell any concerns you may have around changes that are being made. You've seen the prevent, promote, and protect before, you know, they're just kind of our frameworks for what we do in public health. The four towns that make up our district are Berlin, Newington, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield. We serve approximately 100,000 people. And as you know, about 23 years ago, you and Rocky Hill decided to come together and create this district. We are one of 20 regional local health districts in the state of Connecticut. And the districts actually, I have a playground instructor voice, Charlie. Okay, the local health districts actually provide public health services for 1.7 million residents in Connecticut. So, we are covering 47% of the state. So, almost all, half of all public health services are now being conducted by like, by local health districts. This is a picture of our new office. For those of you who are not quite sure where it is, it's in Rocky Hill. If you're familiar with the St. Francis Building, we are in the St. Francis Building on the ground floor. If you're not familiar with that but know where Saybrook Fish House is, you're pretty close. And it's fairly nearby. We employ 11 employees, nine full-time and two part-time, with over 50 active professional and lay volunteers. And many of those volunteers come from your town and specifically are used for emergency preparedness issues and helping us run flu clinics over the years. We have oversight of a 14-member Board of Health made up of members that are appointed by you, the town, on a population base. So, we have three in Berlin, four in Newington, three in Rocky Hill, and three more in Weathersfield. Whoops, did I just do it backwards? Sorry. Yeah, I know, I got there. Here we go. So, this is going to be a little bit different from what you've heard from Judy in the past, but I would like to talk about 21st century public health. 23 years ago, when you started this district, we were mostly about doing food inspections, worrying about people's septic systems, and doing those kind of regulatory environmental health things that I think most people still think of the Public Health Department doing. But it's a very different time and so I think we need to take a quick look at what it is people get into when they decide that they're going to be a public health department, whether that is municipal or if it is a district. Back in 2014, the legislature changed some of the rules about what you have to do if you are a public health department. And so I'm just throwing up here, it's 14226 was the public act. And they pretty much said, there has to be a basic series of programs and services that you provide if you are a local health department. And I left off what they said because I'd rather use a picture, but we refer to these as the 10 essential public health services that everybody has to do. Let's see if our picture comes up, Charlie. Here we go, okay. So, here you have a picture of the three functions that we have to serve in assessment, policy development, and assurance. And each of these stands for something. So, we all have to monitor health status and identify and solve community health problems. Some of this is done through surveillance and investigating, diagnosing diseases and health hazards in the community. And some of it is done in very different ways. We are also under the policy development required to inform and educate and empower people in the community concerning health issues, mobilizing community partnerships, and action to identify and solve health problems for persons in the community, developing policies and plans that support individuals and community health efforts. As we move to the assurance part, the part you're much more familiar with, forcing laws and regulations that protect health and ensure safety, connecting people in the community to needed healthcare services when appropriate. And then we get into the business of trying to assure that we have competent public health and personal care workforces. And then evaluating what we're doing. Is it effective? Is it accessible? What is the quality? And making it all very population-based and as well, doing some research on things that happen there. I'm going to use as an example, something that we're all very interested in these days with what's going on in the state of Washington and the state of California and our own, two cases down in New Haven, and that is the issue of measles. And talk about quickly the difference between a healthcare system, which I prefer to call a sick care system, don't laugh, Mike, because that's what it is, versus a public health system. So, our doctors out there are treating one person at a time while actually in local health we are required to take care of all of the people all of the time. So, what's the healthcare response to a disease like measles? Well, they're the guys who actually provide the MMR to the kids and adults following pertinent recommendations and laws. And in this state, we do still have laws about requiring all children entering school to have their vaccinations. They are also the ones who diagnose and treat the cases. And whether we like it or not, this happens to be a disease that, once you got it, it kind of runs its course. There are no magic pills, there are no real interventions. And they also are required to report that disease to the state and local public health folks who have to do certain things when that happens. By the way, I also want to tell you, the only disease we've actually, the vaccine-preventable disease we have eradicated in the world is smallpox. Despite the fact that we have all of these vaccines, we still can't seem to get rid of them all. So, here's our public health response examples. Obviously, the public information campaigns and trying to convince people of the importance of vaccine-preventable diseases. Very quickly, I know how old I am, but is there anybody up here who's actually ever had measles? In the audience? Yeah, we're, we're oldies. So, so it's kind of, you know, when people don't see it, they don't think it really exists. We have to respond to all reported, reported cases within our jurisdiction. So, once that comes out that there is a case of measles, there's a whole lot of follow-up that has to occur. And obviously, you're seeing it when you read about it in the paper with what's going on in New Haven, trying to find out where those people have been, who they've exposed, how many people are at risk, and what other possible things happen after that. If it becomes a real crisis, we would be the ones who would employ targeted and or mass vaccination clinics in response to the outbreak. We don't really, hopefully, see that happening with measles, but it certainly is what we do with emergency preparedness when we have to be ready. As you may remember with the smallpox issues of perhaps having to vaccinate our whole community in a three or four-day period. And we have to promote policies and laws that require vaccination of children at various ages and to enter school. And finally, part of our job is to really inform and assure parents of how the vaccine works, the need for herd immunity, and the efficiency and safety of these vaccines. And finally, to assure and evaluate coverage, we'll do surveys. Some of you don't realize this, but every year, our school nurses are out there looking at all the records of all the kids in our schools and giving us an idea of what our percentage is of kids who have had all their vaccines and have not. Before we move on here, I just want to talk about the fact that we do a lot that is related to what we call PSEs. Changing outcomes and preventing, promoting, and whatever through the use of changing policies, changing systems, and the environment, which includes both our fixed living environment but also the greater environment that is our social norms, that are our behaviors. And social determinants is a word that we've thrown around for 50 years, but the public's now beginning to realize these social determinants are out there. And the healthcare transition and transformation stuff is actually beginning to look at making changes that change outcomes in the health of people and their lives. So, your health department wants to be an integral bar of that, wants to be an integral partner, since we've heard a lot about partners tonight, with you and the community. Charlie, we'll be talking about how we finance it, how we make it happen. And I thank you for your role already in the opioid initiative. And we're very excited about all working together to see if we can change that for people's lives. Thank you. Oh, board members, I went right back. Okay, I am sorry. I'd like to introduce your board members from the town of Weathersfield. They are important colleagues, friends, and contributors to the local health board. First, there's Deborah Henault, Anne Marie DiLoreto, and our brand-new member, thank you so much for appointing her, Jen Hill, who will be at our first meeting. So, thank you again for your continuing support. And certainly, Charlie and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
I'm going to speak at light speed to go through the rest of this.
The finance is very good.
So, I get to talk about the bottom line, which is always a fun thing to start off with. So, 2017-18, which is our most recent audit, we had a little bit of revenue, a little bit over 1.1 million dollars. And that was split between the town contributions per capita by 75, program revenue, and then grants totaling a little over $300,000. Our expenditures were a little bit over 1.1 million as well. And that, really, the majority of those were the salary and benefits. We don't make widgets. Our, our function is to serve the community. So, really, the majority of our expenditures goes into paying for the people that actually provide those services. We had some professional contracts and then our program and operating expenses at about So, Pat talked a little bit about the 10 essential services. I'm going to dive into this. I wish I could have people walking into the pharmacy and asking for an ounce of prevention. That would make my job much easier, especially if they would provide it. They are doing a little bit of their part with respect to providing vaccinations, but you know, it really would be great to just get an ounce or a pound right away. So, speaking of vaccinations, we do provide influenza vaccinations. Last year, we did a little over 2,000 flu shots. Our average time from the front door to the back door is about three minutes. I know many people have taken advantage of that. We use this as an opportunity to really test our plans and really work within the community to provide that important vaccination coverage. In addition to that, we do disease follow-up for other diseases like hepatitis A and C, Salmonella. We do follow-ups with lead poisoning for children and really look at all the vaccine-preventable diseases and things like Legionella. In addition to that, we also get involved in vector-borne diseases like mosquito and tick-borne diseases. Many of all here, when, when the reports of West Nile virus come out, we have a testing station here in Weathersfield. And so, we like to get involved and make sure that people are aware of what to do to protect themselves from West Nile virus, from Eastern equine encephalitis, things like Zika, which fortunately, we haven't had to see in our four towns, but it's something that we keep an eye on. And then those tick-borne diseases like Lyme. As Pat mentioned, we have been very involved in the response to the opioid crisis. We've been the convener for local agencies within our four towns for the past almost two years now, over two years now. We had our third stakeholder forum in July and we currently have work groups, volunteers, people within the communities that actually are working on prevention, response, and recovery. I do have the pleasure to announce that we were awarded a two-year grant from the Department of Health, Mental Health and Addiction Services to work with persons suffering from addictions and their families. So, we got a two-year grant for $150,000 over that two years. So, we actually are doing a, a lot more and have the resource to be able to really help to tackle this particular issue. How we protect against environmental services. Well, we do have inspectors that do a lot of inspections, over 1,700 inspections over a variety of the agencies that we regulate. And you can see the numbers there in front of you. Our inspectors work very hard, they work as a team, and they really do assure the protection from environmental hazards. Respond to a number of complaints. Last year, we did 221 complaints. The majority of those were housing and property maintenance-related. In addition to hoarding complaints, as you can see from the pictures, when you walk into one of these situations, it can be quite involved. It usually takes a team approach, working with social services, with building, and, and just trying to take, take the time to be able to address the issues as you see them. One of the issues that we see within all our communities is asthma. We have our Putting on Airs program, which has a team approach where we actually go into patients home that are referred to us. We do home We do home visits with asthma patients to be able to look at their environment, what their triggers are, have an asthma health educator that goes over their asthma control plan, to be able to look at their medications and be able to educate them on those things. And that's been a tremendous success. Other environmental hazards that we protect against, we actually do radon kit distribution within our agency, and lead poisoning prevention has been something that's been very important here recently. We've had a lot of outreach to rental properties within our four towns, and we just want to let people know, it's not just peeling paint anymore, that you see, like in old Weathersfield, where you're rehabbing a house. We see a lot of things like jewelry, spices, toys, and even pressure cookers, as you can see here. We've actually tested and found that the lead in the seal for the pressure cookers in there that people use every day, and a lot of our residents are really unaware of that. But we do that type of investigation, try to find the source of the lead and eliminate it, so that we can lower those lead levels within the children. Preventing injuries, we sell bike helmets. We're probably one of the best deals you'll ever find for a bike helmet, as of warm days as we have today and tomorrow. I know kids are thinking about those bikes. $10 for a bike helmet is not a bad deal at all, and we encourage everybody, if you're riding your bike, wear your helmet. We've been providing a lot of reminders on Facebook and our page, trying to get people to understand some of the risks that they could be exposed to. Promoting encouraging healthy behaviors. We're in the fourth year of our walking competition. Last year, Berlin won the overall competition for 2018, and Rocky Hill won the impact award for the highest participation. They took that away from you guys. You guys won the impact award the first year. We want to see y'all actually take it away from them. So, I encourage all of you, get your teams together. We're going to start here in April, once again, for the walking competition. So, if you're not thinking about that, especially on days like today, get out there, get moving, get walking, so that we can really hit this hard in April. Other, how we promote other health behaviors, we have our Living Healthy in District Guide. We do training sessions on a variety of issues throughout the year. In our new facility, we actually have a room to be able to do those training sessions in-house. But we actually go in the communities, we work with you. And I'm really excited to be able to say that we're working with Weathersfield on their bike and walk plan. We've had sessions with the Complete Streets, working with the town planners, working with Bike Walk Weathersfield folks, and really trying to bring that policy change down to the community level. And we're excited about that, having a plan in place, hopefully, here in a couple months. Tobacco use cessation is another policy issue that we look at, and probably going to be working on much more with things like vaping and e-cigarettes and things of that nature. Responding to disasters, as Pat said, our flu clinics, we treat them as opportunities to test our plans. We have wonderful volunteers that actually help us do that, but we test our plans every year. I believe that we are probably one of the most prepared districts because of the way that we actually test those plans. In addition to the flu clinics, you know, we also have plans that deal with flooding and other natural disasters, and how we would work with the town departments to be able to really respond as needed. Assuring the quality of health services, we actually provide senior dental screenings. Last year, we provided 117 clients, seniors, free oral health screenings. And that's so important, as we age, to be able to take care of our oral health, because it is indicative of our overall health as we get older. It's something very important for us. How we prepare for the future, we're continuing to look at the National Public Health Accreditation as we move, as we actually get together doing more quality improvement. We are doing a code revision for our sanitary code, based on the adoption of the FDA food code here, so we actually are doing quite a bit in this area. Last two words are thanks. I can't say thank you enough to our member towns, you, our public, for your continued support, and we stand ready to answer any questions that you might have. And that was light speed for a Southerner, I just want to let you know.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Councilors, are there any questions? Councilor Hurley.
Thanks. We've seen similar presentations the last several years.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we brought it back, we're going to change it up next year for you, so y'all.
No, that's fine, we see what's happening. I just, last year, when you came, you were going to combine everybody into one building, but that cost was going to cost us more, but we didn't, like, agree with the idea, but you guys still went and did it. So, how does that work? I guess I don't understand how you move when a council isn't in agreement with doing that.
Well, our budget is actually set by the board, so our board is a governing board. So, they represent you, and the representatives that you actually have are the ones that go through that process. We have a similar process for our budget, where we have public hearings, we have to be able to provide that information out to the public, and, you know, we really do try to be able to provide as, you know, the best, most cost-effective services that we can as a public health agency.
Okay, I get that, it was just, we were going to increase costs by moving, like, almost like regionalizing all our, all the towns into one building, and usually, when people think about regionalization, it costs you less money. So, it just didn't make the council at the time feel very good.
Yeah, I mean, what I will say is that, on the whole, we had to really make a decision. And we had to weigh in the balance, the cost that we would have to implement certain things, like the FDA food code that's coming up here. And in our current, or in our previous situation, we were looking at having to add staff. And staff, as I mentioned in my presentation, really do, is the majority of what would cost us money. So, having to add a sanitarian specifically, to be able to deal with the additional workload that we were looking at. So, the cost for that really looks somewhere around, just for the sanitary itself, salary and benefits, close to about $90,000. So, the move that we actually did was much less than that. So, we actually increased just our operating expenses somewhere close to the tune of about $60,000. So, one of the main things that we had to do prior to moving to our board was to justify and make sure that we were going to be, at the very least, cost-neutral. So, that was one of the things that our board provided oversight for, and we did a lot of justification, a lot of actually working with the town managers to explain this process.
Thank you, and I do look forward to looking at the budget in more detail for 2019, in a few months.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor.
Two things. Charlie, first, you said that you have public hearings on your budget. I assume you show them, you publicize them locally.
Yes, sir.
But my suggestion would be, for the benefit of the taxpayers in the various four towns, if you could forward your budget sessions to the four towns, so they could be put on our website, which is what our residents' team will look at more than your site. They would know, so if they want to come in and listen and voice their objections or acceptance, they could be able to do that.
Yeah, we would definitely be able to do that. And we actually are required to post, according to Freedom of Information Act, post our meetings just the same way that you guys do. So, we don't just post to our website, we actually send it to each one of the town clerks, so that it gets posted within the towns, it gets on their websites, it also gets put in the paper, so that we try to provide as transparent of a budget process as we possibly can.
Okay.
And could you just give us a timeframe for your budget process, so everybody knows?
So, our budget process, we actually have two things that are involved with our budget. One, for the towns that we serve, we have to actually have the per capita cost to you by April 30th, and then we have to pass our budget no later than the end of June.
About we're in contract.
Yeah, so, one thing that has kind of held up our budget here in the past few years has been union contract negotiations, and we're in a contract negotiation year this year. So, you know, we probably are going to be closer to that June timeframe, but we will definitely have the per capita cost to the towns by that April 30th, no later than that.
And so, your public hearings are when?
It depends, I mean, most of the time, we're probably going to be May timeframe, Pat, is when our public hearings for our budget usually go.
So, then you create your budget, give us the per capita numbers, then you hold your hearings and adopt after we've adopted our budget?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Other questions? Councilor Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. See you again, Charlie.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. One, I'm going to follow up a little bit on what Council Hurley was talking about. What was the reasoning behind the move from this particular building to the new facility?
Well, there were several reasons for it. One was the addition of staff, either having to add staff or use our staff more efficiently. So, the way we were structured before was, we had five separate offices, one in each one of the town halls, and an office in the Newington Senior Center. So, being able to centralize our staff really does allow us to be able to work more efficiently. People can support each other, there's not the time it takes administratively to be able to handle things like just supervisory support. So, just having the staff in one central office, we've already found that there's benefits behind that. Additionally, some of our office space within the town halls was not ideal. We, as a public health agency, we need to be accessible to our residents, and in some of our town halls, we were not. There were stairs, there was not a way for our people to get to our staff there. Additionally, some of the area was not ideal, air quality issues in some places. So, we really were looking at how we could bring our staff together, how we could provide more efficient and effective services, and be cost-effective and continue, you know, our run.
Do you think, was the major driver the fact that you had people in different locations and you wanted to centralize? Because I think that the air quality, I mean, that's like an ocean thing.
Well, I mean, like I said, it's a combination of factors. The main thing was actually being able to efficiently use our staff, because the difference between trying to add staff to be able to perform the functions that we're mandated to do, and then not having the room in the spaces that we were to really be able to have any staff. So, it was a challenge.
Got it. Second thing, a question I had is, can you go back to the slide that has just the number of allocated board members? It was, it wasn't necessarily in your presentation, I'm not sure if it's the same presentation.
Oh, yeah. Let me just get back there. Right there.
So, this, I was curious, when I look at the populations of the particular towns, Berlin and Rocky Hill are almost about the same size, about 20,000. We're at almost 26,000, 27,000, and Newington's about 30,000. So, it seems to me like we would probably, the makeup of the board would be that Weathersfield would have four board members, so it would be more logical according to population. Is there a reason for that?
It's actually set by statute. So, by statute, you'd get, and correct me.
One for every 10,000, and another for a part thereof.
So, as 26,000 for the town of Weathersfield, you'd get two, one for each 10,000, and then the additional one, three, for that 6,000.
So, because Newington had reached the 30,000, five people.
30,000 and above, even if they went over five people, they would have that fourth representative. Well, I'm just saying.
It's a technicality, but it will.
Understood. Well answered, I understand the concept now.
So, you've got to bring some more people.
Right.
I will say this, y'all are very well-represented on our board.
I'm sure.
And now that we have a full complement of Weathersfield board members, they really do provide the oversight for us from your town's perspective.
The next one was, a question I had was, last we talked, we did talk about the possibility of expanding, and I know that lots of times, we're looking at consolidation of services, and Cromwell certainly is sort of that thing that sticks out, when you look at a map, I think they have their own.
Yeah, and we actually did, we're approached by Cromwell to provide a proposal for services. We did put that together, provided it to them, and they chose not to go with the district at that time. So, you know, it's a lot like a dance. You've got to have both partners dancing to the same sheet of music, and it has to be a win on both sides of the equation.
When did that occur?
We actually put that proposal in probably eight months ago.
Okay. And how about other towns? Have we reached out to them to look at some combination? And when you, again, when you look at the map.
There's not a lot of towns around the area that we can reach out to, to be able to make that happen. We are open to expansion, as, you know, as it comes up, and usually, that happens at a time of change. Cromwell, for example, they had their health director that was getting ready to retire, so they were trying to look at what their options were, which was one of the reasons why they reached out to us. And then, a lot of times, there may be situations where a health district or a town is looking, you know, just to see if there's a better match, and there may be opportunity there. We really do try to look out and see what, how we can provide and expand our services. I will say this, I think that the idea of regionalization is still out there at the state level. There's probably going to be more conversation about this, and health districts are part of that conversation. We, as a health district, are one of the most successful models of regionalization of keeping costs down that exists within the state of Connecticut. So, we've been, have a health district since the '60s, Pat. So, being able to serve at a regional level. So, I mean, we, I believe, are open to that, and I think we'll continue to be.
Okay. And then there was another slide that talked about garbage and refuse complaints, and I was wondering how that is looked at vis-à-vis, you know, if we just have sort of blight ordinance and litter laws and so on and so forth. How does your, how does the health district sort of interplay with the rest of our laws relating to trash and garbage and refuse? 7%, like, that's actually a real number.
Yeah, 7% of our calls come in on garbage and refuse, and really, when we're looking at those types of things, it revolves around unsanitary conditions that the garbage may provide, or harborage of rodents or insects. So, from a public health perspective, we're looking at those vectors of disease, and whether or not the unsanitary conditions, like the garbage, would contribute to that.
So, is that, like, complaints that would be almost from like a town, where you might have town staff that are going around there? Is it people? What's the resolution? How does that work?
Well, we take complaints really from anyone, so we may get situations that get brought to us by town departments, we may have residents that call in with a complaint. Once they do get called in, we actually do send one of our inspectors to investigate. So, we take a look at it, and complaints are one of the most time-intensive things that we do, because each one of them is pretty unique. We may end up being able to work with the person that has the issue and resolve it fairly quickly, but we have had situations where we had to work with state's attorney's office to be able to really turn things over to them, to where they take legal action against the violators. So, it is an intensive process, but really, what we're trying to do is to enforce the public health code.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
I had one more question for you, Charlie, and that's regarding the flu clinics. I got this question posted to me this weekend, I figured I knew you'd see here tonight, so I saved it for tonight, instead of calling you. I was told by somebody this weekend that there's two different types of flu shot. There's a regular, and there's a stronger version, and that the health district used the regular version and not the stronger, and that, you know, seniors especially should be getting the stronger. So, my question is, you know, is it a fact that there's two, and which one should we be using?
Well, there's actually, there's actually more than two, but I'm going to throw this over to Pat a little bit, but I will say, what we use is a quadrivalent vaccine, which covers four different strains of the virus. So, it provides a broader spectrum of coverage against what could be circulating out there. The high-dose vaccine that's been coming out here recently is a trivalent vaccine, so it only really provides coverage over three different types of influenza. We make a judgment call, so.
Well, we don't really make a judgment call. We.
As we provide it.
Yes, but we make, we follow the CDC recommendations, and I'm in the same ballpark as you, my immunity's waning, and so we want to get the best bargain for us. As Charlie said, the quadrivalent has four different strains that you're covered for, and the other one only has three. So, there's a good market out there to seniors, trying to tell you that it's the stronger, better vaccine, but take it from another old person, I'm taking my quadrivalent. And so, you know, we're not CVS, and I doubt if you could walk into CVS either and say, gee, I don't like that one, can I get the other one? So, the judgment is made based on state recommendations, the Center for Disease Control recommendations, and that's how we come up with the quadrivalent.
So, technically, with you giving out the four, you're giving out the stronger of the two.
The stronger, the stronger is the four.
Right. Thank you. I want to have, be able to get that back to that person, so that's why I have, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilor Rell?
Thank you, Charlie. Let's see, where are we on this? If you probably go back a couple slides, I had a question about the per-person town contributions.
Okay.
Yep, right there.
Yep.
575. How long has that been set?
Well, that was in 2017-18. The current for 18-19 is actually at $6.
Okay, so it's going to go up, and...
Yeah, but, yeah, remember, this is last year.
Yeah, so, we take the audited numbers from our most recently completed audit, that's what. That's what we provide the numbers for. Our current per capita is $6.
Okay. And then you touched on, it's not in a slide, but you commented on the, I think you have nine employees, two part-time?
We have 11 employees, nine full-time, two part-time.
And you'd mentioned union contracts? Where are you in negotiations with that, or where are you in contract?
We're just starting. We have a, had a four-year contract. I was lucky enough when I took over to step right in the middle of the initial contract negotiations. We had a four-year contract, so we're currently at beginning renegotiating that contract.
And I know you're not at liberty to say too much about that, but are all nine full-time employees on?
No. Actually, we only have, I think it's six positions that are covered by our collective bargaining unit.
Okay, and.
At this time.
Are they looking to renegotiate to include more, or?
That's always an option as far as with the union, so, you know, that is something that they, they look at. Currently, they, they have not expanded over the four years. I'm not sure if they would choose to do that. They're fairly focused on the environmental section, so, you know, we'll have to, have to kind of wait and see.
And as you know, they gotta get someone to sign a card.
So.
And when we are negotiating or discussing our budget, obviously, the health district's budget plays a factor in that. Where would you be with negotiations at the time that we are starting to? I mean, I think we have to approve our budget by May 15th, so we're gonna start negotiating.
Hopefully, we'll be completed. It took us quite a while to get our initial contract in place, because we had to establish a contract. So, this time, hopefully, we don't have to go down into the minute detail that we had to initially. But, you know, once again, it opens up everything for negotiation. But, you know, as I said, for your budget pieces, we have to have our per capita to you by April.
Okay. April 1st, or?
April 30th, I believe, but I mean, we, we really do try to get that to, to the towns as early as possible, because we know that y'all are planning for your budgets as well.
And then just looking at, you know, the quick math of $6 over top of, you know, 575. I'm not that good. I can't even come up with how much that would be. 560 divided by 575, you're talking about, yeah, just roughly 100,000. You know, not, well, you guys had it in there, 98,000 residents, so 100,000.
So, so, for, so, so just, as a quick rule of thumb, because we're close to 100,000, for every 10 cent per capita raise, it's $10,000 in budget.
Yep, so we're talking 25,000 increase, and then that is on revenue side, and on expenditure side. The next slide, 1,110, what are you guys looking, projecting? I know I'm asking like.
You're asking me to get my crystal ball out.
Crystal ball, yes.
And, and really, our expenditures, we tried to keep those down to a minimum, just as, as any public agency does. That being said, you know, the cost of doing business goes up, so we have to be able to cover those costs. We have done some restructuring with respect to our grants, to be able to have those cover more of our operating expenses than what they have in the past. So, we're really trying to do some rebalancing in how we actually cover our overhead. So, we're trying to really make sure that we limit the impact to our towns, you know, for the things that we do. That being said, you know, that per capita charge of $6, if, one of the handouts that we handed to the town council was a history of, since our beginning. And if you looked on the back of that, it shows all of the health districts and what they charged last year. So, last year, we were at 575, and we were at the bottom third of the health districts within the state. At $6, we'd still be in the bottom third of the health, health districts in the state. So, $6 per person per year to provide the comprehensive public health services that we went through today really is a heck of a deal.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate it, and I think definitely, not only with the health district, but with everything else that's going on with the budget, come this springtime, when we're really delving into it, we'll be taking a, you know, a look at it, and hopefully, we can find some places to save, and, you know, not impact not only the health district, but the residents of the four towns.
Yep, and, and that's, as I said, that's one of the things that we do really try to do as a health district, and to be able to provide the most cost-effective public health services that you can find.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments tonight? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation and for coming tonight. Keep the screen down. Okay, so we'll do reports, okay. As long as, as long as they can see us, we have reports to do first, Kathy. All right. So, we're gonna keep the screens down, because I think the next presentation, we're gonna have another presentation momentarily, so, thank you. Before then, we do have reports from boards and commissions. Are there any council members who have reports tonight on boards and commissions? Counselor Lester?
Thank you, Mayor. You may recall, a couple months ago, we formed the Veterans Commission Town in December, and we, I mentioned this at last meeting, we are partnering with Weathersfield High School to have a 75th anniversary of D-Day, which will be on June 6, 2019. I do want to read you kind of what the plan is, and I want to give the credit to the high school, two, two teachers. And bear with me, it won't take that long, I'm gonna put my glasses on, because I can't see. But John San and Ann Trinkus, they are helping lead this, and we're partnering with them in the Veterans Committee. But here's the highlights of the program, which I hope many of our residents can go. And again, it'll be on June 6, Thursday morning, the exact 75th anniversary of D-Day. It will be a 20-minute advisory period in which freshmen, sophomore classes will watch a short video on D-Day. The junior and senior advisories will have the opportunity to hear a veteran speak about his or her experiences. The entire community will proceed to the athletic field, where the program will continue. There will be musical, interludes both vocal and instrumental performed by our students. Student representatives will speak about the role that each branch of the United States Armed Services played in the liberation of Europe. The program will conclude with comments from a World War II veteran, Mr. Daniel Cannellary, and then the program will close with the playing of taps. So, this is just one thing that the town Veterans Committee is involved in. And again, it emanated from the school system, and we have partnered with them. But I want to keep you guys posted on this and other things that the committee is doing. And again, June 6, Thursday morning, 2019. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members? Counselor Hurley?
I just had something to say about the police department. It was a couple months ago that we had the, that the mayor asked the police chief and our legislators to come down. All four of them actually showed up to discuss crime, because we had some crime going on. And there was a lot of discussion about moving the ages for youthful offenders back to where they were like five years ago. Two of the legislature supported it, two of the other ones wanted to find out more information. Shortly after that, the police chief did put information up on a law as soon as it became available. And I didn't see anything like, I didn't see anything against it. I didn't hear that we were gonna have a Facebook policy. This is the first I'm hearing of that. And I want, I would like to be involved with that, because I'm not a big proponent of censorship.
Just to comment on that, it's not a Facebook policy. There's a social media policy that the town staff had been working on back in the spring. Is that, when, when did that start, Kathy?
It started, actually, in the fall. Well, the summer, summer into the fall.
Because it started, it had started, I thought, before the previous town manager left. Is that not correct?
There was some discussion on it, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think it ever got brought up to the town.
No, it hasn't. It's still in, it's, it was being worked on at the town staff level.
Yeah, well, this is the first time that I've even heard about it.
And I did, the, our representatives, legislative delegation is working on finding a date for a community conversation. Excuse me. They have mentioned both February 26th and 27th. And like I said, they are working on that now to find a room and make sure all four of them will be available. So, those dates are not set in stone yet, but I did receive those dates this week, that they are trying to have another community conversation on those two dates, one of those two dates, and in somewhere in town.
Excuse me, Mayor, is that on this issue, or is it on any community?
It's on any, it's just a community conversation on any issue. Any member of the community would be able to come and speak to the legislative delegation about their concerns.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me clarify that, Kenny. Go ahead.
Just to clarify things a little bit, Mike, EDIC had wanted to set up a Facebook page, just to bring forward what was going on in town and stuff. And before they did, the, you know, the previous town manager wanted to get a policy in place, so all departments were on the same page. So, staff has been working on it. Once it's finished, it would, you know, go through our town attorney first, and then it would come to council for reviewing comments. So, it wasn't that we were being left out of it. It's just something that staff has been working on, so they could present it to us. So, I just wanted to give you some of the history of why it's in the works.
All right, usually, we hear about, like, larger things like that, but that's okay.
Are there any other council reports?
Not a report, but kind of to follow up on that and to Mike's conversation. Now, would this be for social media pages that are run by departments like the library?
WAC.
Yep.
The Old Elm, the EDIC.
But EDIC is made up of volunteers. I mean.
But they're, they're the ones who are now, I don't want to say in charge, in charge of the Great Elm website.
So, it would be for something like the Great Elm. I'm just worried if we're gonna go down this route, that we're going to, you know, this, this body, as well as a number of other boards and commissions are made up of volunteers. So, when you start to inject yourself as either a public servant or as a private citizen, it, it kind of muddies up what your comments are. If I was to comment on the police department's Facebook page as a regular.
This is pertaining to posts. What you, if you're an administrator on the town of Weathersfield's Facebook page, one of their pages, you're an administrator, you're posting to those pages, the social media proposal, the regulations or guidelines would pertain to that. What, what you're posting and, and what's appropriate use of the pages.
Content going out, rather than the conversation going back and forth.
Well, it does also pertain to comments, and I think even the police department's page has it right on the page, that the police department will remove comments that are deemed inappropriate by virtue of A, B, C, and D. So that, you know, if you put something totally inappropriate in a comment, an administrator on that page would be able to remove it. So, there would be some removal of comments.
Okay.
And I can, I can ask Kathy to send the draft out, because I have seen a draft of it. But it's, it's a draft. I mean, Peter Gillespie is, was working on it with others.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, to kind of go along with that, I read on Facebook the other day, as many others have, about the James Francis House, which is a property owned by the Historical Society in Old Weathersfield on Hartford Avenue.
Yes.
They are planning to sell that. The Historical Society is planning to sell that building. I am, you know, not only a member of the Historical Society, but as a liaison to the society. I am gonna, you know, keep an eye on this sale, a pending sale, or, you know, proposal to, to sell the property. There are concerns, not only from a gentleman from Middletown Avenue, he's not here anymore, but there are concerns about what was going on in Middletown, Middletown Avenue on the corner of Maple, that, you know, when private developers come in and purchase town property or private property, that there isn't really a checks and balances through a number of boards and commissions in town. But I think this is one that we should probably keep an eye on, to make sure that any sale does not, you know, raise the building or alter it in any way that deems it, you know, not historical anymore for our district.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? I'll just report that I sat through the OPEB meeting this afternoon, the fireman's pension meeting this afternoon, and the town pension meeting this afternoon. And all, for all three of the meetings, the conversation was very similar. It had been a difficult fourth quarter in the U.S. and international equities. So, it was an off-quarter and an off-year, but the 3, 5, and 10-year still showed growth, and that we have had a strong January, which was good for market recovery. That's my report from pension committees today. If nothing else, we will move on to B, discussion items. We have Sally Katz, our Physical Services Director, here. This is a state grant for the purchase of a physical services dump truck. This item's on the agenda for discussion.
Thank you, Sally Katz, Director of Physical Services. The town fleet, we have a suggested replacement schedule for our fleet. In the fleet, one of the dump trucks that we own is a 2006 Sterling dump truck. Sterling is a manufacturer that is now defunct. It went up, it ceased operation in 2009. Parts are no longer available for this, this type of truck. Knowing that we are in a replacement schedule, we saw an opportunity to apply for a one-time grant through DEEP, through the state, who are receiving money as part of the Volkswagen diesel emissions settlement. And through that settlement, the state was given a certain amount of money to then give out to the use of cleaner engine vehicles for purchase. The diesel truck that we have, that is the 2006, because it actually has an engine in it that was manufactured in 2005, we qualified to be able to go after this grant for the replacement of the truck with a, what they call a cleaner diesel truck vehicle. Surprisingly, and very fortunately, we received a grant in, for $49,086. And that is approx, it was, it is close to a quarter of the cost of the vehicle. These trucks are very expensive. There is no getting away from that. They last around 10 years. Mostly, they end up rotting out, not from disrepair, and not from care and maintenance and upkeep, but from the salts that they are used for spreading salt in the winter. They're used for leaf collection. They're used for bringing materials from the transfer station to the, to the stockpile. They're used for any of our other type of road materials and throughout the year. But it is mainly the salt that is a corrosive agent. And this truck has had, seen its, seen its, part of its body starting to rot out. I do have pictures, which we can send along at a, at a later time. I want you to understand the time tonight. And so, utilizing the, in the town materials, we have chosen a type of vehicle that would be appropriate. We have looked at the state contract. It's where we would purchase our vehicles. And we are looking to have this discussion about moving forward. It is wonderful that we were given and awarded this grant. The one stipulation is that we must take possession of a new vehicle in August, which does not give us a lot of time to make a decision as to whether or not we want to move forward. But we wanted to present this to you, to have some discussion about it, knowing that this $49,000 is quite a lot of money towards something that we know we will eventually need. knowing that this $49,000 is quite a lot of money towards something that we know we will eventually need and actually have the need now to replace.
Do your council members have questions? Deputy Mayor?
Sally, I, I see within your presentation, you need to do something by February 28th in order to be able to collect on this grant. You know, a one-quarter savings is a nice thing. Unfortunately, if we purchased this truck, it would be through a lease purchase arrangement. We're in the start of the budget season, because I know we started on a CIP part already. But on CNEF, uh, could, prior to the next meeting when we'd have to vote on something like this, could you get us a list of the vehicles that you're recommending for the CNEF for the next budget? The cost of that and the lease purchase of that? Because, you know, personally, I don't want to see our lease purchase and grant total going up for next year. I'd like to see it stay stagnant or, you know, go down if we could. So if you could get us that information before the next meeting when we'd have to vote on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, we can. And, and the replacement of this truck was our, is our, is, will be and is our number one ask.
Other council members? Council Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. Are there any other, uh, vehicles that this $49,000 would apply to besides this truck?
No.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Councilor Ralph?
I mean, so you're presenting it to us tonight with us to deliberate over the next two weeks to vote on it, two weeks from now. The grant amount again was $49,000?
Yes.
From the state, and it's the Volkswagen clean energy or, or diesel, um, settlement?
Yes.
The, um, that kind of puts us kind of in a bind. Uh, I mean, we purchased the, or agreed to purchase the, the lift, and I know that had been on the, tabled on the agenda for over a year. Just tried to go back as quick as I possibly could, thinking about the purchases that we've done over the years, at least in the past year. If you can kind of refresh my memory.
We, as you said, um, we, we recently got approval to purchase the lift. The other purchases that we've made of vehicles have been through the CNEF part of the budget from this year. And so there was, um, there were, there was a truck and some smaller pickup trucks, I believe, from last year. Again, we've published or have given out our, uh, replacement schedule. We wanted to actually replace this 2006 in a previous year. But because of budget constraints, we didn't and didn't have that go through. So it was going to be a part of this next ask, uh, for this year, um, because of the condition of the vehicle. And we're just always looking for opportunities to get money from places. And this clean, this clean energy grant became available in November. And so we applied for it in hopes that we were going to see what, if anything, we could get. And, uh, the 50, the $49,000 was, um, was recently awarded if we purchase. And that's just a, if we do not move forward with it, and I understand it is a very unusual request. The timing is really not falling into place the way that we want it. However, if we choose not to move forward, then we need to notify the states that those funds can go to another town. We can't just keep them and wait until our budget process runs its normal course. And that is an unfortunate sidebar to this.
And the, the state kind of has us over a barrel when it comes to that.
Yes, they do.
And unfortunately, they do when it comes to us having to create, uh, craft a budget in the next couple weeks, month, month and a half. It's tough right now, not knowing what we're going to get for, um, state funding. Governor's going to give his address, uh, February 20th, kind of give the, the runs for the municipalities. But again, it's wide open after that until the legislature adopts a budget and then governor signs it. Which will probably not happen until after our May budget, like it's always has. Right now, I got to say, you know, this is a, it's a big ask and it's, it's one of those where, you know, just to put it in, you know, layman's terms, if you've got four gallons of milk and you got a coupon for, you know, buy four, get one free, what do you need a fifth gallon of milk for, just simply because you have a coupon for it? Is it that this truck is a workhorse? We need it? Is it the, the staple of the, um, fleet that, uh, without this, you know, roads aren't getting sanded and plowed?
To counterbalance your, your example a little bit, yes, this is a, a truck that is used for a snow removal route. So it does, um, it does have, um, a designated route that anytime we do snow or ice, uh, winter operations, it is used. It is used, it has a route for when we do leaves. It is one of the trucks that is out, um, collecting leaves. We also use it, as I said, as a hauler, uh, during the year along with roadwork when we do our potholes and other roadwork during the spring and summer and fall months. It's, it's a truck that's, like our other trucks, they're used all year round because we don't have specialized trucks for that type of, for the work. It's whatever the work is for that season. So now it's snow and hauling, and in the fall, it's leaves. It never sits, uh, unused.
Right, right.
And it is, as I said, to answer your question, yes, it is a truck that is used for a snow route.
I'll have to think about it. Thank you.
Councilor Forrest?
Thanks. Um, Councilor Ralph just sort of made me start thinking about a few things. I was looking at the contract here that we were provided. I think this is the one from Freightliner. Is that correct?
Yes.
So a couple of things come to mind is, one is, back in 2006, a car was purchased by a great maker of Sterling. What is the concept that you have about procurement of services, particular trucks, that would protect against, you know, purchasing an item that may become obsolete? Not necessarily because the item goes bad, but because of maintenance and so on.
Well, um, we buy our trucks, just to let you know, off the state contract. So, uh, vendors that they have vetted as part of their procurement process. So Freightliner right now is, um, Freightliner actually bought whatever parts were good of Sterling. And so right now Freightliner is, i- is the major manufacturer of trucks that the state has a contract with. And so, um, does that answer your question? I'm not entirely sure.
I guess in your, in your, in your industry, there, you would think that there might be protections. Sorry. That there, or, or how do you guard against protections against the purchases of certainly of large mechanical materials and so forth? So that there's some protection of you, you, then you can't be able to use it in a certain timeframe because the company is going out of business, because the parts aren't made, because, I mean, this happens with software a lot too, right? And so what is the, how do you protect that?
It's a vehicle. It's just as right now Ford is no longer going to be making some of its cars. But they're still warranted. If they have a five-year warranty, they're still warranted under Ford. These trucks come with five-year warranties, so they would be, they're warranted under Freightliner. If Freightliner was to be bought by Volvo, then they would honor their warranties. We try to utilize our trucks for 10-plus years by maintaining them, by washing them, by trying to get as much of the corrosive material out of them, by performing, as I said, both, you know, preventative maintenance on them. They're always used and they're used for very different types of activities. And 10 years is a pretty good lifespan for a workhorse kind of a truck. And that's pretty much what we've gotten from this, from this vehicle.
I noticed that the bid, it looks like, is about 207, 208,000. Is that?
Yes, it is.
And then, does that include a lot of those, I don't want to say extra because that doesn't sound like, but, you know, the, the snowplow, the hook? You know, all the materials that, for the jobs that need to be done with it?
Right. Everything is in this, we've, we've detailed everything in the bid.
Are, are things like snowplows and, and invol, as part of the 207,000, or is that different?
That's, we can utilize the plows that we have. This is for the truck.
Just the truck basically?
And its connections to the other equipment.
Got it. And then the truck itself, that, would that truck come out of, out of the fleet then or in sold?
Oh, absolutely. In order to satisfy the grant, we actually have to prove that we, uh, drill through the manifold and we literally take, and we cut through the frame of the vehicle. That is, that is what we've had to do when we've gotten, um, vehicles through this type of grant before. You have to prove that that vehicle is no longer capable of being put on the road and in use as part of a clean energy grant.
Well, why wouldn't we sell it?
You can sell it for scrap, but you cannot sell it to be used on the road.
Why?
Because that's the, that's the.
Purpose of the grants, to get the bad diesel off the road.
It's a clean diesel. They don't want it on the road. So you can sell them, you can sell the truck for scrap metal, but you can't sell it to be purposed somewhere else. That negates the grant.
And how much is the, that value?
Of the truck?
Sure.
Not very much. I don't have a, I, I would have to get you the specific. I'm not going, off the top of my head.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments from council members? Okay. Was this simply for discussion tonight or is it the intention to move this to the agenda? Or do we need a motion to move it to the agenda?
Well, what we were looking at was just to get a sense from council whether this was even anything you would want to consider for, um, for, because of the timeframe we would be under if we were to accept the grant. So we didn't know if you felt it was something that could move forward or that maybe it wasn't the time to be looking at another truck when we haven't gone through the budget process yet. We just wanted to get a sense from council, from council what, what you might be thinking. So as not to bring it if you're not going to support it or, or do more research and bring it and then discuss it in, at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, I think, um, the deputy mayor's questions about, um, what other vehicles are, you know, on the CNEF list currently? And if we could find out what vehicles we've purchased over this past year and what CNEF, um, monies have been spent over this past year? Those things might help us to determine whether or not a $200,000 dump truck is, is something that, you know, we should consider for our budget. And the timeframe is that we have to, we have to order it by February 28th? Is that what I read?
We, we need to, we need to place an order by the end of the month in order to have the truck at, um, in order to qualify, to have the truck, uh, available to us within the timeframe of the grant.
So we would order it by the end of February and it would come in after, then, after July 1st? So we would be paying it out of the next budget? How does, how would that work?
We could do, yes, we could, um, put a letter to Freightliner saying that the town has agreed to pay for the vehicle, um, when it, when it comes due. And that would be, um, post-July 1st.
And when would you take delivery of the vehicle?
By August. That's the, that is the, um, within the description of the grant. That it has, that we have to accept it by August 31st.
Okay. All right. So then could we direct you please to get the, that information for us for the next meeting so that we can make a decision?
Yes, we can bring that, all that information at the next meeting.
And, and just to clarify, we would bring the physical services vehicle requests for CNEF. CNEF encompasses many other departments.
Sure. And again, um, you know, a list of the vehicles that we purchased this year of that as well. Okay.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next, we have the resolution in support of the MDC's integrated plan, and this is an action item. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, a move to approve the resolution in support of the MDC's integration plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So is there any discussion on this? Deputy Mayor?
I read through this, uh, plan by MDC. Fiscally, in a way, it makes sense from the standpoint that they're pushing it out to do capital projects at the same time, to reduce emergency repairs and stuff like that. But the thing that I'm against, and I'm going to vote no for this, is because we've asked MDC in the past to, you know, do what they can to reduce their budget. I went to the two budget workshops this year, and they didn't really listen to what we had to say. So my vote is going to be no on the principle of, yeah, this makes physical sense, but budgetary wise, I don't think we can afford to pass this on to, uh, our taxpayers at this time. Unfortunately, only one of eight towns, so our negativity really isn't going to have much weight, but I still want to get that point across to them.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Forrest?
Just from a sort of procedural standpoint, are we, is this, um, are we acting on this today? Because this is sort of a workshop meeting rather than at a regular council meeting.
As part of the, um, regular workshop meeting, you have the ability to take action on any items. That's part of what was voted on for the ordinance for the workshop meeting. And just because timing, the MDC was looking to get this information and we put it on, uh, for a potential vote this evening.
How does the timing of, this is a ser, this is a, this seems to be a, you know, a resolution expressing some of our thoughts on behalf of the municipality, but it's not required to do anything for the munis, for the MDC itself. They don't need this approval to do anything or not do anything. So why is, why would there be a, any type of a required timeframe or to do this?
Well, they've asked that the council would consider it. And, um, we did introduce it at the previous, um, business meeting as part of the process. And now it's coming up tonight for a vote.
Well, from an MDC standpoint though, why does the MDC need this from us?
The MDC has asked each member town if they would act on this resolution to support their plan as it moved forward to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So as part of their submittal to them, they were looking to show whether or not towns in the, member towns would support this.
Okay. So I, I suppose if we're moving forward, if we are, if it does come to a vote today, I have some concerns about the length, uh, the two concerns that I mostly have is that the length of time that they are looking to bond this over is tremendous. And it goes right in, I mean, my children, who are six and four right now, are, their children will probably be born while we are still paying off this particular debt. And I have no problem, of course, with the ability to smooth out curves, not take a billion dollars and, and come up with that over the course of one particular budget period. And that's, of course, why we do the bonding, um, in order to smooth that out, in order to have, you know, reasonable ability to pay off very, very large sums of money. The importance of the MDC and the ability to have clean drinking water is the, the basis of society. So, you know, establishing and spending money for that purpose is one of the reasons that I supported the Clean Water Project years and years and years ago. However, the way in which we are financing this over the length of it is something that is not something I am comfortable with at all. If we need, as this generation, to pay our fair share in order to have clean drinking water for this region, then that is what we have to do as a basis of society. I'm not willing to put that off of my children and/or wait that long for the work to be done and paid for for the protection of the environment and the protection of the natural resource. Secondarily, by extending it that far, we're also then pay, not necessarily using those dollars in the most efficient way because we're going to obviously have to pay the interest on that and the financiers that are backed, uh, that, that would back those particular municipal bonds. So because of those two reasons, I, it would be difficult for me to support this particular resolution as the way. resolution as the way forward for us as a region, as a member of this, as a partner in this, in whatever form it takes, to, I don't think this is the best use of our resources and the wisest way forward to protect the, the drinking water and the sewer water and the environment as it relates to pollution. It'd be tough to support if it's going to come before us today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I too am going to vote no, for a reason, really I want to send a message to the MDC that the way they budget things, and they come here a couple times a year, and I agree with the comment those men in the public, I usually can follow the presentations pretty, pretty easily. Their presentation is very difficult to follow. I think the way they continue to increase at rapid, and you could almost argue exorbitant rates each year, notwithstanding the important work they do, I would like to send a message in terms of, I think they have to do a better job in terms of how much they charge the member towns, and how much our citizens are paying. So I'm not going to support this resolution.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hurley?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I think they just want us to support their high cost of doing business, and that's the only reason they have it up here. There's no other reason. And I also like the idea, maybe next time, giving them a vote of no confidence, that would really send a message to them.
Okay, any other council members? Okay. I too am voting against this resolution, and for the comments that have been made. I think that we talk a lot about how we have, you know, these, these burdens that we are, we are facing from things that have not been paid for generations back, so why would we want to put this on our children and on our children's children? And I also think it does send a message to the MDC that we are disappointed with the continued increases that we receive. And although I do agree that this smoothes out those increases, the length of time is just simply too long, in my opinion, for, for the bonding of these projects. So I too am going to vote against this resolution. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? All opposed?
No.
No.
Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay. Do you have that vote, Dolores?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. The resolution does not pass. The next item on the agenda is a tax deferment program to assist federal employees. Kathy, would you speak on that, please?
Sure. We had put together this information that came out of the state legislature, when they allowed towns to be on a volunteer basis to look to assist federal employees when they were on the shutdown. Yeah, thank you. And what, what we looked at doing was also to, at the time when we went through all this, the shutdown was still on and moving forward, and this, this, this program that we're proposing is for anybody that was affected by the shutdown that began December 22nd, 2018. That was what the state authorized, if the towns wanted to put a program into place, it would be based on the shutdown that began December 22nd. So that would affect employees that might not be able to pay their taxes, or the interest on their taxes because of the, not being able to meet their bill, that the towns had the ability to go ahead and pass a policy that would allow, if they qualified, that they could defer for a certain period of time.
Okay, thank you. And the deputy mayor is, is keeping me on track. We did not make a motion on this yet. Do I have a motion for the tax deferment program?
I make a motion, sorry, I make a motion to approve the Town of Weathersfield Tax Deferment Program to Assist Federal Employees.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, do we have any comments or questions on this? Councilwoman Hurley?
Yeah, it's over, and I believe everybody got paid, so why wouldn't they pay their taxes? I just, I guess I don't understand.
Isn't it, if it happens again, you know, we don't know?
This is, this is the one time.
No, this is for specific-
I guess I don't understand, we probably should have just taken it off the-
Councilwoman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, do we know of employees who were impacted, who may not have paid their taxes because they hadn't gotten paid until recently? Do we have, do we know how many Weathersfield employees that, or federal employees that this may have impacted?
We, we don't know how many federal employees might have been impacted. We know that, we, I checked today, and with taxes having been paid, we have 713 residences that have not paid their taxes. I can't tell you how many, I would not know whether or not they were federal employees.
Thank you. So, if we pass this, if they're one of those 713, or however many, 10 of them are federal employees, and they have not paid their taxes, this would waive their interest costs on being delinquent, is that correct?
If they, if they qualify. So if you're a federal employee who had been working-
If you're a federal employee, and I know, you know, obviously we do have several in, in Weathersfield. Is that the intent, is that what would happen? So, of the 713, whatever the number is, let's say there's 50 of them, that are federal employees of the 713 that haven't paid their taxes, then we're excusing if we pass this the interest that would be due? I'm not looking at that right now.
Yep. We would not charge them the interest, and then they would have, I believe it's 60 days, let me just double check. They would have a penalty not later than 60 days after the date on which an individual is no longer an affected employee.
Well, nobody's affected.
Yeah, they all got paid.
But, but they may not have paid their taxes, they just got paid.
Yeah, but if you get paid, you pay your taxes.
That's not the way this is written. This is written as if the thing's still going on, the proposal. It's referring to a 60-day period from when the shutdown ends, which doesn't exist. I mean, this would have to be reworded, it doesn't apply.
So Jack, could we ask the town attorney to come up, to answer a couple questions on this? Did you work on this?
This is the CCM proposal.
So, go ahead.
Well, having, you know, read it, and I agree with Tony's theory on this, that it, yeah, this is not, this reads as it would pertain that the current shut, or the former shutdown is still ongoing. And I guess my question to our tax clerk, who's not here, is, is there typically a grace period anyways, for if your taxes are due January 1, and you don't pay those for 30 days, you have 0% penalty, and then after 30 days, you know, you get a 1% up to 60 days, 2% up to 90 days. Is there any grace period at all?
Not at this time. We've, that was January 31st. So now, interest will start.
And, and there's no way to quantify how many of those, and I'm sorry, 713?
13.
13? I guess we would have to know from our tax clerk, how many typically don't pay their taxes on time? And, and is it because they are federal employees and the shutdown occurred, and they didn't have the money at the time? Wouldn't they have called the town to say, "I'm sorry, I'm, I'm an employee of, you know, X, Y, and Z federal department, and I am currently not getting paid, you know, can you give me some latitude?" I mean, that, that's what should have been done at the time that the shutdown was ongoing. Now that it is post-shutdown, which could actually be pre-another shutdown, so if anything, this should be reworded that would say, during any shutdown, any federal government shutdown. But you open yourself up to loan, or not loan forgiveness, but tax forgiveness to just a select segregated class. I mean, what happens if you were one of the 713, and you lost your job? You, you know, you were laid off because your company moved from Connecticut to Massachusetts, and you were part of 141 people that were let go. Why wouldn't we give them some type of amnesty? I think going down this road, even though it's, it doesn't make sense as written right now, according to what I'm reading, I think you're going down a, a dangerous path of giving amnesty to a segregated class. If you're going to do that, you got to do it to anybody who comes in, and I think the town does that. If, if I'm not mistaken, we, we hear appeals, and we hear of hardships from the public about their particular case, and I think we, we, well, I would assume that the tax collector considers those as a, a case-by-case basis. I may be mistaken, I'm knocking wood, always paid my taxes on time, so I've never been in that predicament, but I think these are questions that we should probably have of the, of the tax collector, before we vote on something like this.
Sure. So it sounds like that it would be a good idea to table this and get some more information and determine whether or not it's even necessary. Wait, did you want to make a comment, or do you want to move to table? Are you making a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we table this for now, and have the tax collector come to the next meeting, and be able to answer these questions and any others that might come forward, so we can decide what we're going to do. I mean, I don't know what the particulars are like, but I know in the past, when people are delinquent and have problems, the tax collector has worked with them on a payment plan, so they could pay it off a period of time. But I don't know what that is, but she can explain that at the same time.
Right.
When she comes, as well as all of this as well.
Yeah, it seems to make sense. Are you making a motion?
I made the motion that we table it to the next meeting.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. We have no ordinances and resolutions for introduction, so we move back into public comment. Members of the public have five minutes to speak on any topic, and please state your name and address. Come on up, Mr. Colantonio.
Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Regarding the physical services, I guess, you know, every time we come right here, there is some, something that we have to buy. The truck is only about 10, 11 years old. Personally, everybody that I talk to, mechanics and whatnot, it's just like, you know, you get the most out of your vehicle when it gets older. So, if we could work with this truck for a couple more years, forget it. That's the amount of the, of the grant that we're getting. I mean, a $200,000 truck, we get 25% there, it's, it's about $50,000. It's still going to cost us $150,000. If we can work with this truck for a couple more years, I think it's, it's, it's worth it, you know? Yeah, parts, I guess they're going to be rare, but you can find them. Another, the mill rate. I was talking, you know, to some town employees, I guess a few weeks ago, and it came, says, "If you don't like this town, you can always move." Ah, I've been here since 1973, I've been paying taxes, and now, if I don't like the way you guys behave, I can move out? That's not the way to think about it, personally. Going back to Morrison Avenue, I got about three and a half minutes. I've been complaining about it the last 10 years, and I know now that there is a meeting coming up, sometimes, eventually, and whatnot. And I brought it many times now. Whenever I refer to Hillcrest Avenue, I'm only comparing Hillcrest Avenue and Morrison Avenue because they are adjacent and parallel to each other. By any means, I don't want anything to change on Hillcrest Avenue. I'm only addressing Morrison Avenue. And what did I say? In 1955, Morrison Avenue did not connect it to Silas Dean, so for all practical purpose, there was no traffic, true traffic. The width of Morrison Avenue, it's only 24 feet wide, and a little bit less in certain areas, and Hillcrest Avenue, it's 30 feet wide. The setback on Morrison Avenue, it's only about 20 feet, the front setback, with a, I believe it's a 50-foot right-of-way. Hillcrest Avenue has an 80-foot right-of-way, and a front setback of 40 feet. Stop signs. Hillcrest Avenue has one intersection with three stop signs, Morrison Avenue has two intersection with three stop signs. It's two to one. Have you ever asked yourself why? Maybe not. I wonder why? I'll let you be the judge for that. Grass strip. For most of the time, I ca- Hillcrest Avenue is a 15-foot grass strip, very safe, very safe road. Morrison Avenue at the corner, or between Tifton and Orchard, there is no grass strip at all. With a mountable curb next to the sidewalk, because whenever the, the town designed it, they did not really know what they were doing. When the sidewalk is adjacent to the road, the curbing has to be different, not a mountable curbing. The sideline intersection after the, before the construction of the sidewalk, there was no problem at all. Now, the sideline intersection is not good for the posted speed. I told you before, I'm going to tell you again, and yet, after 10 years, nothing has happened yet. And yes, speeding, it's high. Since the sidewalk has been done, the road is smoother and everything else, and especially now, I'm retired, I see, I sit, watch TV, and, and I hear the noises, and I see the people going by, and yet, for the first time, if the chief of police is watching this, I'm calling him, because a lot of people do not stop at the stop sign at the intersection of Morrison and Orchard. But I never called the police department to complain, but now, this is public. I guess I'm doing it. And, you know, having said all of that, and I'm going to give you another month here and there, we're going to meet with the town engineer, I want to meet with the police department, I want to do something, and if nothing gets done, I will not go away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come on up, Jim.
I'd like to talk about Memorial Day. About 15 years ago, 12 to 15 years ago, I, there was the Democratic mayor of New Haven was running for governor, I forgot what his name was, and he came to the-
John DiStefano.
Huh?
John DiStefano.
No. No, it wasn't DiStefano. Yeah, maybe it was.
I think so. He ran against former Governor Jody Rell.
So, so he came to the Democratic Town, Town Committee, oh, before that, and on Memorial Day Parade. He got a bunch of his supporters, and he, and he just busted in and marched in the parade, and, you know, that's a no-no. The parade, Memorial Day Parade, for people that don't know, is to honor the fallen, the people that have made the ultimate sacrifice. So, when he came to the Democratic Town Committee meeting for the support, he gave a little talk, and I got up afterwards, and I admonished him for doing that. And I, I told him it was shameful and dishonest for him to do that, and he, he came and apologized to me afterwards, but the damage was done. Then, the Chamber of Commerce, a few years ago, decided on Memorial Day evening that they were going to shoot fireworks. And I wrote letters to the editor, and I voiced my opinion that, that this was not right, that Memorial Day is to honor the fallen, the people that have made the ultimate sacrifice, and they still did it, they did it for three years, and not a peep out of any one of you people, nobody. Everybody thought it was fine, the Chamber of Commerce. And finally, last year, they changed it to another date. So, then, last, last year, at the Memorial Day Parade Committee meeting, the, the leadership announced that the Democratic Progressive Woman, whatever they call themselves, were going to march in a parade. going to march in a parade. And I said, "It's not a parade, it's not, not a parade that you should allow people with political agendas to march in a parade that honors fallen veterans. It's not right. The Democrats march in a parade because they're elected officials, Republicans march in a parade because there's elected official. But these people are advocates for, they have, they have an agenda, and it's not right." And I was overruled, and I resigned from the committee. And I tell every veteran, "Don't participate in a Weathersfield Memorial Day Parade," because they honor, they don't honor fallen veterans, they honor, they have, they have a political agenda, and that's what they're doing. And I think it's shameful and dishonest for them to allow these people to march in a parade. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? Mr. Mazzarella?
Good evening again. Tom Mazzarella, 600 Walker Hill Road. Good night tonight. Maybe somebody's listening to me. Had your MDC resolution along the same lines that I was thinking? And we tabled this truck for now, or for further discussion. I wanted to speak a little bit about the replacement truck. As you know, I've spoken many times about this scheduled maintenance replacement, and we heard again tonight that heavy trucks are now on a 10-year soft limit for retirement, and I just think that's entirely incorrect. There's no reason why that truck couldn't continue into service for, in service for many more years. We have excellent town mechanics that service the trucks. I believe they do an annual DOT inspection, where they would check the brakes and the chassis for corrosion, and on and on and on. They make sure the truck is safe, safe to continue to its next inspection. If the Sterling manufacturer is no longer in existence, I would propose that you run those Sterling trucks, and I'm not sure how many we have, but I think it's a large number. I think the majority of our dump trucks are the Sterling trucks, 15, if I'm not mistaken. So we're not going to go out and replace all 15 trucks in the next couple of years because they're nearing their 10-year expiration date. I just don't think that's the way you do maintenance. I've been in maintenance my entire career. I maintained large commercial aircraft, old aircraft. We were able to maintain them under a budget, kept them in service for many years, had 99% dispatch reliability. When an aircraft has a problem, they don't pull over and call AAA, okay? They crash. So you can do serious maintenance, you can do it right, you can do it within budget, and you can extend the life of the vehicle. Now, if they develop rust in the chassis, which is quite possible from all the salt, take the truck out of service, and then go buy another truck. But if you get four, five, even three years more out of it, you're better off. The Director of Physical Services says they have no value. I disagree. I looked online today, wanted to go out and buy a 2006 Sterling vehicle. Most of the vehicles have several hundred thousand miles on them. 560,000 miles one of them had on it. 800,000 miles one of them had on it. Those trucks were still going for $50,000. This truck that we're discussing had 4,354 miles this year, which comes out to 48,000 miles in its lifetime. So I think our trucks are lightly used, let's put it that way. Sure, they take some abuse, plow and snow, but they rarely see the highway, they rarely leave the town limits. So, and they're highly maintained. And now we can put them on a lift, and we can do a better inspection. So I see no reason to take them out of service. The other thing I wanted to bring up, the whole thing of this grant money was that we're going to reduce our emissions, and the grant application states that Weathersfield has this plan of reducing emissions and greenhouse gases. In this application, you'll note idling hours, annual idling hours, 752 in one year. 752 hours of sitting there idling. And I'm sure you've all seen the town trucks sitting there with the engine running, with nobody around, they're doing something, they're taking a break. There's a law, anti-idling compliance and enforcement. The trucks are not supposed to run more than three minutes at a time between shutting them down. I suggest that you start enforcing that law. We can reduce our emissions, we can save some fuel, and we can save some wear and tear on the vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. I too was pleased to see that you at least voted down that MDC resolution and put the truck on hold. That truck and the way that money works, you know, if it came from a VW settlement, I would have thought that the money would have gone to VW car owners or vehicle owners. I don't know why it's coming to the town. Do you know why?
No.
I don't understand that. I would have given it to the, to the person that bought the cars that has a problem. Why give it to the town?
They don't have them anymore.
Still give them to them. They're, it's recorded somewhere that they, they owned it, and now they got rid of it because it was a dumper or whatever. They're the ones that should have gotten the money, then there would have been no discussion at all here. No discussion on whether to buy or not to buy. And I, I don't think you really should buy. You should use what you have that's old, and it's really not old, and make it work. And, you know, to me, it looked, it sounded, sitting out here, listening to that, it was like the state was doing economic development. They were, they were churning some money, and in the, in the process of churning the money, they were getting the towns who would have gotten this $49,000 to go out on the hook again for more, to go buy that full truck instead of a quarter of a truck. This is the way I look at it, quickly here, and I just think it was a scheme. A scheme that the VW owners should have gotten the money, and not, shouldn't have been done the way it's done. In any case, I just didn't think that was a good way of doing, liquidating the money. So anyway, I know you have some other things to talk about. I've been talking about the properties, and I've talked to you extensively from this podium about properties. I've talked to you about the dollars per acre that we've been seeing, that we see properties have sold for. And, you know, I could recite some of those. Again, $22,000 sold in Windsor. $14,000 an acre sold in Manchester. $17,000 an acre sold in Glastonbury. $65,000 for a very small parcel in Glastonbury. $33,000 in Glastonbury for another small parcel. $46,000 in Glastonbury, and another one, $38,000. These are sold properties. You can go online and look at them. They make your property on Highland Street look terrible, because it does look terrible. These properties are productive. And while I spoke about the Roses Berry Farm, where they had infrastructure set up, they had berries, they had all kinds of stuff going on, buildings, irrigation systems in there, and they sold it for around $33,000 an acre. Yet, you're buying something for $75,000. I would urge you, and when you go through this list and think about all those different properties that I've talked about with low numbers, I don't see how your appraiser could possibly come up with that kind of a number. You know, the night of that public hearing, Mr. Forrest made a comment that he thinks or is probably fair market value. And I've been thinking that, as soon as I read that and I heard that, he read that appraisal. He knows if that appraisal was fair market value. And it better be fair market value, because, but I don't see how in the world you're going to have that. And I know you're still holding back on that appraisal. You haven't released it to the public. And I guess we'll have to wait until you decide not to buy the property and find a way to get out of it, or you make the worst move you possibly can make by buying it. Remember this, folks. Think of the stock market. You look at the stock market every day, you see it's boom, 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 and you see a real spike go up, like that.
Finish up, Mr. Young.
Then it comes back down, and it bubbles along. What's going to happen is, when you people buy that Keisha Farm for $75,000 an acre, you're going to look at the, the cost of raw land going like this, and all of a sudden, it's going to go way up there and come zooming down and continue as we go through the next weeks and months and years.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Young.
This will be such a blurp, madam, and it's going to stick out there like a sore thumb.
Is there anybody else?
And you'll be hearing from me forever and ever. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none, we have an executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Good night.